Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the order, the August 19th, 2020, school committee meeting, 5:19 PM. At this time, I would entertain a motion, we enter an executive session to discuss the continuing collective bargaining with our employee groups and the strategies to be followed in or continued ongoing litigation. Do I have a motion?
Now make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Cutlass, second by Mr. Wilson.
I'll second.
Yep, enter into executive session. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to reconvene, the August 19th, 2020, regular school committee meeting at 6:05 PM. The August 19th, 2020, school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. This is a virtual meeting via WebEx. Due to the recent open meeting law policy set forth by the governor during the current state of emergency, the meeting will be held as a virtual meeting. To participate, please call 978-771-0819. In view live through televised cable channels, Comcast Channel 22, and Verizon Channel 34, or at YouTube at www.youtube.com/TuxburyTV. As a preliminary matter, please allow me to introduce myself. I'm Keith Sullivan. I'm the chairman of the Tuxbury School Committee. Also, please allow me to confirm that the members and persons anticipated on the agenda tonight can hear me, consent to be recorded, and are present. Mr. Cutlass?
Yes, I do consent, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Demos?
Yes, I do consent.
Wilson?
I consent as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Unfortunately, Mr. Stadman was unable to make tonight's meeting due to a work commitment, and I am also present and give consent as well. For staff, can you please also respond on the affirmative? Mr. Malone?
Aye, and I consent.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes, I consent.
Thank you. And Mr. Libby?
Yes, I consent.
Thank you, Mr. Libby. Tonight's meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive orders. All the supporting materials that have been provided to members of this party are available by request. You can please email gailjohnson@gjohnson@tuxbury.k12.m a.us. And just to refresh our ground rules for tonight's meeting, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After the concluding of their remarks, I will go down the list of members, inviting each member by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. I ask that our members please mute your phone or computer when not speaking. Speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And if anyone has comments or questions that can be submitted in the chat window, then you will be recognized accordingly. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you. And if members wish to engage in dialogue with other members or staff, please do so through the chair. Thank you. For comments during Citizens Forum, I will ask the member of the public to identify themselves by name and address for the record. Please be aware, if you do call in, you will be recorded. You will then be offered three minutes to comment on any current or previous agenda item. Finally, all votes taken at virtual meetings will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you. Moving on, seeing we have no recognitions or student representative report or presentations, that takes us to Citizens Forum. While we wait for anyone that may be calling, I'm going to ask Mrs. Demos if she would turn to the approval of the minutes while we await any potential callers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Demos?
I move for the approval of the minutes for July 22nd, 2020, reorganization meeting.
I have a motion and a second to approve the reorganization meeting. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the minutes from July 22nd, 2020, regular meeting.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the July 22nd, 2020, regular minutes. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That's a four-o vote. And now checking with Brian to see if we have anyone for Citizens Forum.
We have no callers at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'd like to turn the floor back over to our clerk, Mrs. Demos, for our submissions and payment of bills then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the school department payroll for the period ending June 25th, 2020, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,306,950.36. Keithy muted.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending June 25th, 2020. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thanks again, Mrs. Demos.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I move the school department payroll for the period ending July 23rd, 2020, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending July 23rd, 2020. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
You have a vote aye as well.
Mr. Chair, I move the school department payroll for the period ending August 6th, 2020, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,130,664.90.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending August 6th, 2020. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Going to check back in with Mr. Doran. Brian, do we have any callers?
We do have one caller. Just give me about 10 seconds to bring him in. Okay, the caller is on the line.
Hello, you're on.
Yes, this is Michael Brewster, 31 Langley Lane, Tuxbury.
Good evening, Mr. Brewster. Thank you for calling. Do you have a question or a comment, sir? Yes. You're on.
Go ahead, caller, sorry.
Yes, Michael Brewster, 31 Langley Lane, Tuxbury.
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Brewster.
Yes, I had a few points, and then I had a couple of questions for the school department and one for the school committee. As a parent of two daughters that are in the North Street and Wind Street schools, I really feel we need data-driven measures and milestones, just like the state's phased reopening, to be shared with all, to get a safe return to it all in person, and even a return to hybrid, assuming there's a pivot to full remote at some point. Otherwise, I feel that there's going to be continued chaos and emotions that are driving these decisions and further divisiveness across the community beyond what exists today. So I'd recommend that we debate some measures, come across, get all parties involved, come to an agreement somewhere in the middle. And if this isn't done at the state level, or if we don't want to mirror what's done at the state level, I think we should do something at the local level, if we feel we should be different. My complaint is I think we should ask parents to make, asking parents to make a binding decision before a clear plan is not really fair, including the teachers' negotiations that are still in progress. And my last item is with this shortened day plan versus the full day plan and the hybrid model, the shortened day plan with the post dismissal being a check-in and extra help resulting in basically one-third of the teacher instruction that's being given up as part of the four-day plan, two hours less. I feel that this is really going to result in our students getting fairly behind in the grade-level curriculum. So as to my questions, first two are for the school department, the superintendent in particular. In the Step 1 documents, and also in the workshop that was held earlier this month, it was noted that schools would be able to logistically and physically able to support lunches in a full-day plan. I want to understand what has changed to result in the proposed or the current, what was submitted to the state, of the shortened day plan. And then I also want to understand, other towns that are doing the full-day plans, how Tuxbury is not able to similarly address the challenges that they have to provide a full-day hybrid plan. And my last question is for the school committee, and I know there was a vote on the model earlier this month. I wondered if it was possible for the school committee to make a motion to vote on a full-day hybrid plan versus the shortened-day hybrid plan. And if that is a possibility, I would strongly encourage a motion by the school committee and to vote on this today at this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brewster, before I turn it over to Mr. Malone for his questions, I will just add that we are currently in negotiations, obviously, with all of our employee group. I can assure you that we want to make good decisions that are based on science, numbers, facts, and metrics, as opposed to fears and opinions, or quite honestly, some arbitrary dates that may be put out there. That being said, what we voted on was just simply a model to start instruction. Obviously, we need teacher involvement, we need teacher buy-in, we need staff buy-in. And I know people are frustrated and have anxiety. I have children in the district as well, and the uncertainty, I certainly have empathy for everyone that's going through this. But until we're able to navigate that process, you know, we're going to have to see where we are with the staff. So we will not be revoting tonight on the plan. I don't know if that's something we can or cannot get with, but certainly that involves negotiation with the teachers. So I will now yield the floor to Superintendent Malone for the first two questions that you had.
If I can get a little help, that was very garbled on my end, so I caught some pieces in regard to the hybrid piece, in regards to the partial day in-person as opposed to a full day in-person. Is that the question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the question. In particular, it was noted that at the workshop, it was physically and logically able to accommodate the lunch within. I don't know if that's the guiding factor or not, but I'd like to understand why there was a decision made to move to the shortened day as opposed to the full-day hybrid plan.
Sure.
And I'd also like to understand what differentiates Tuxbury from a standpoint of the challenges that some of these other surrounding neighboring towns are able to seem to be able to accommodate with the full-day hybrid plan.
I've got it, thank you. So if we go back to the workshop, and I think you can look at the slides and look at those pieces, when we talked that, for instance, lunch and transportation were seen as challenges, but they feasibly could be done, the caveat to that was add a cost to the budget. There would need to be additional food service people hired, because now we would be serving food not just in the cafeteria, but in the classroom. We would also need to hire additional custodians to now clean classrooms, to the point where they are at the same level of the cafeteria, identifying food allergies, all other kinds of pieces of cleanliness, and how that trash is handled and removed from now multiple locations as opposed to one. So we could certainly do it, but we would need to hire additional staff. With the transportation, it was a bit twofold. One was the ability to add on additional runs from the same company, or whether we'd need to hire an additional company. The other piece with transportation, if the students were in a full-day model and doing double runs, particularly our youngest students, our elementary students, if students had to wait at school for a bus to do a drop-off on a run, and then come back to school and pick up the second load of students, for our youngest students, which would be the latest in the day, going home, we would likely see elementary students going home in the dark and spending a significant amount of time waiting on transportation, particularly in the afternoon. So those were identified as challenges that were feasible to overcome, but there would also be significant cost to the budget. There are other pieces specifically that lend itself to the discussion of a partial in-person hybrid model with a partial remote in the same day. Some of those were our social-emotional concerns about students eating six feet apart, the length of the day with students in masks, and the ability to give them enough mass breaks and the stress that goes along with that. Some of the other pieces are going to be staffing. We have a significant number of staff who have applied for leaves in relation to COVID. If we don't have the staffing available to support our students all day long, we're not going to be able to do it. We're actively looking at substitutes and other pieces, and we're also negotiating with the union very, very vigorously to work this piece out. When you ask specifically about other districts and other pieces, I would say it's twofold. One, some of the districts that have moved forward with a full-day hybrid have negotiated that with their union and have worked that through. Other districts that have put that in their plan, I can tell you, have not fully negotiated with their district. If we look at the parent surveys in regards to a partial in-day of the hybrid and a full-day in the hybrid, approximately 57% of our parents favored a full-two-day remote, excuse me, full-two-day in-person portion of the hybrid. About 43% of our parents favored a partial day in-person. However, over 80% of our staff preferred the partial day in-person, partial day remote. So we'll continue to work on these issues with our union as we negotiate. I think any hybrid model is going to present challenges across the board for parents and childcare issues, there's no doubt about it. We believe also that part of the hybrid model that's extremely important for student success is to have the highest quality remote portion of that hybrid as possible, whether it's a partial day or a full day, it's two days, and the other three days are remote. And we want to make sure we have a highly interactive, highly teacher-involved, remote portion of that hybrid model, because we feel that that's going to be our best chance beyond the in-person part, which is limited to two days, to make sure our students have success. So I'm not sure if that fully answers your questions.
Thank you. That does address a lot more of the information that I was looking to get. I would ask maybe one follow-up question with regards to the full day, with regards to the partial day plan as it's specked out now. As students are being dismissed at lunchtime, that after lunchtime period, as I understand it, is going to be a check-in and extra help? I'd like to understand how the gap is being made up with the teacher instruction that they're not going to get in the full-day hybrid model with the partial model, given that that kind of is a loss of two hours of teacher instruction, from the way that I'm kind of reading and understanding the partial model, with it just being a kind of check-in and extra help for students during that time. So maybe if you can help there, I think that might, you know, help address the other question and major concern that both my wife and I had.
Hi.
This is Assistant Superintendent Brenda Regan, Mr. Brewster, and I think I can help you a little bit with that. The remote portion of the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday is not only intended to be a check-in, it's really intended to be support to that core content, not only for the students that were in class. This is the goal, at least, that we hope, that we have in mind in remembering that we are still negotiating these schedules in their entirety. But our goal would be that students are participating in a remote class, which is now blends in their remote rest of the class. I'll say if the A cohort was in-person and the B cohort was remote, that this is an opportunity for a class that they do together, as well as an opportunity for the core content teacher, and if we're talking about a grade level, the younger grade levels, to work with both of them to support that core content. So it's not simply a check-in, as we might have called remote learning in the spring. It's actually following the schedule of one or two, or at the high school, three of the classes that fall in that waterfall schedule at the end of the day. The Wednesday follows a full schedule as well, and hopefully blends again both of those cohorts together to learn together. One of the key improvements parents had asked for from remote learning in the past was that students had an opportunity to work collaboratively with all of their peers on a regular basis. So we're hoping to build schedules that build that in. And keeping in mind that while one cohort's in-person and the other is remote, we were uncomfortable with going full days without having those kiddos in class with their teacher, even albeit remote.
In one thing I would just add to that, you know, as we drill down to some of those details that we've been talking about as a district, and some of those pieces, these pieces have to be negotiated with the teachers' union as well. So that's part of the piece that is ongoing.
If you were able to look at the sample schedules, that, and these are ways we've thought of how we support students at the K4 level, that first-class students are included in after the lunch break is phonics and literacy. Now, that supports the ELA lesson that would have happened earlier in the day, but for all students. I mean, we have to think about our little students who are learning to read, and there might be a specialist built into the end of that day as well, where all students participate in that class. So it isn't only a check-in, we're looking for planned instruction that works with all of our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan, and thank you, Mr. Brewster, for calling in tonight.
We do have another caller, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, could you please put him through, please?
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, caller, you're on, sir.
Hello?
Yes, I'll step away.
Go ahead, caller.
Yes, my name is Greg Marr. I've got two children at the Heathbrook, and I have a follow-up question on the half-day program. You know, we're talking about how children may be getting home in the dark, and transportation's an issue and everything else, but I'd like to know how children are going to be expected to be online at 2:00, when you're telling us that the same group of children may take hours and hours to get home. Additionally, at the elementary level, when you've got children who are having breakfast at 7:00, and are getting home for lunch at now 2:00, you know, so parents are now expected to get out of work, get their children, get them home, and somehow get them fed and back online, or they'll be punished by 2:00. And I don't see how, if the concern is transportation time, how is it going to be feasible that we're going to get all these kids home to be back online fed by 2:00, when they're dismissed at 12:30?
So, thank you for the question. I think a couple things to realize when we talk about the transportation element is that we're talking about scenarios where we need to implement double runs due to the number of students that are limited on the vehicle and where the vehicle is going. We're working every day to try to streamline that. We don't foresee hours and hours of students waiting or being in a location. That's not, we do believe that if we're able to get some harm in conjunction with the lunch hour, we have the luxury to be able to do that, as opposed to a time after instruction where it's getting very late in the day. We hope to work some of these things out. We're, transportation, and I'm not sure if you were a part of the workshop prior to this, transportation is going to cost the district more money than it ever has, no matter what model we're in. No matter if you're talking special education transportation, if you're talking working with our large bus companies, they're going to have to do more, they have to clean the buses more, we need more buses, we're going to need more drivers, so there's going to be a stress factor on that. We understand that families have routines, families have expectation. Part of that is going to be try to work with families to manage when students come home. The family dynamic of when a parent's home may not connect directly with that time. We certainly want to make sure that we have synchronous and asynchronous lessons designed to be interactive for the students, but we also want to be mindful that parents may be getting home from work later and want to spend time with their child doing the learning. And how can we adapt some of those lessons and those experiences to be flexible enough, maybe not to happen in real time at, say, 1:30 when the child gets home, but can that be adapted that a parent could sit either in the day or in the evening?
Now, under this plan, the children will be online.
For a parent to sit down with the child and work through some of that. But we also have a higher expectation of what those lessons are going to look like compared to the routine.
I'm getting an explanation as to why that changes if they're going home at 12:30 as opposed to going home at the end of the day. How would going home at the end of the day get them home in the dark, but when they get home at 12:30, they're going to be home in time to be on at 2:00? Because that was the argument that was just used.
Well, I think the argument had to do with the level of handling transportation in an uncertain scenario with predictable double-run situations, and students being at school at a time now where staff have left the building or are leaving the building at the end of the workday, and students being there. Now, if we have to do a double run at 12:30, I'm not sure that's going to get us to 2:00, but it's going to be later than probably 1:00. So I don't recall being in the conversation where we were talking hours. I think it's just the fact that if students are, there's an expected possibility that students are going to be later getting home, we'd want to be able to manage that in the day. I don't recall any conversation about hours or being hours later. Certainly, we get worried as we get students in the fall and the end of the school day, and our youngest students are the latest dismissed in the day. We certainly worry about that.
That still raises the question, how are they going to be expected to be home for a 2:00 lesson after a 12:30 dismissal, if they get out at 3:00 and it's expected that it's going to be dark and the teachers are going to be gone? We're still talking about it taking the same amount of time for them to get home. So that hour and a half to get them home off the bus, fed lunch, and back online for a mandatory class, that they will face repercussions if they don't attend, is still not a feasible plan.
Yeah, again, I think we're having a disagreement over the hours, or the distance, or other things of that nature, but certainly we understand the concern, I think we've listed several concerns we have regarding transportation that we're concerned about, and several issues that we're working in the union on as well.
As with a lot of this, there's a lack of communication or a lack of good information being disseminated to the parents, and it's, we're all kind of in this confused boat where we don't know what's going on, and we're being asked to make a decision prior to having full information. So. full information. So I appreciate your time. I'll let you go and let other people ask questions. But these are just the concerns that I know several of of our parents near us are having with this plan. So.
Thank you, Mr. Marr.
Thank you.
Brian, are you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Can you please do me one favor? And hopefully everyone at home can hear as well. I would just respectfully ask that we have to respect people throughout this process. You know, I've said this before, you know, mindful, man, if we can't even be mindful of, you know, other people's opinions or situations, boy, are we in trouble. And I think that starts with, you know, having some effective communication. Please, we want you to call in. We welcome your input. But, man, if you got a call, please, if you ask a question, please allow someone the opportunity to respond before we dive into another question. We're all in this together, as we've heard from the outset. We've been very fair and open and honest and transparent. We haven't done what other communities have done. I don't want to speak for other communities. They went out and rolled out plans and they're dealing with potential fallout with having to negotiate with their unions. We didn't take that mindset. We started in July. We put stakeholders in all of our employee groups as part of the reopening task force. So we could get information and we're all trying to do what's best for all of our kids collectively. But, man, please, if you call, and we want you to call, don't take it as I'm trying to discourage, but please just ask a question, afford someone the opportunity to answer that question. If you have a follow up, we're more than happy to do that. But please, I just implore you that we 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 have to do that, or, you know, it's just not going to be productive for for anyone here this evening. So with that, Brian, could we have our next caller, please?
Caller, you're on the line.
Hi, this is Julie Gonzalez. I live at 20 Bryan Lane.
Good evening, Mrs. Gonzalez. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. I'm calling, you know, as a parent and I
We lose her, Brian?
We did. She appears to be on the call, but the
Hello, are you there?
Hello.
Mrs. Gonzalez, is that you? Great, yep, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Yep.
Oh, yes. I'm part of a parent group online of about five or six parents who are all kind of scrambling to figure out this hybrid situation. A lot of my comments are going to overlap with some of the other callers, but I'll keep it brief. And I know, you know, you guys are in a difficult situation doing the best you can. And I just feel like many of us feel kind of blindsided getting this information solely about the half day program. And a lot of parents have concerns that they've been voicing. And one of my concerns is the quality of education. You know, sending my daughter to second grade to half days a week is the equivalent of one full day of school. And one full day of in-person instruction doesn't seem like enough for, you know, a young child. And then at that point, she's expected to get picked up, go home, eat their lunch, go, you know, go online and do remote learning. You know, it's like starting it all over for them. And I know a lot of families in town are moving with private schools. Several parents are pulling together, like private learning pause, hiring teachers. And so I feel like it's not going to be equitable. I'm worried that my daughter will fall behind and that our town will fall behind against other towns where we aren't having full time in person or even two days full time in person. And I feel like it puts us at a disadvantage. And I know even with the private schools, those of us that have looked into it, there's waiting list. So, you know, it's the second problem is that for working parents, that, you know, most of us still, we need to have two incomes coming in. And we're used to relying on there being full time school as well as the before and after care options through Alphabet. And now it's just very stressful putting us in a difficult situation trying to figure out, you know, what to do with our kids. And, you know, having child care in our home and then, you know, potentially pulling together with all these other families, you know, maybe on Wednesday, they're mixing cohorts and then increasing their exposure by being with these other kids or being watched by high school students. And I just feel like it's not the best situation as far as, you know, the care of our children and choosing between, you know, our jobs and the incomes that we need. And the other thing is, I'm allowed to teach her, you know. It's hard going from the role of parent to teacher. And I know when we went remote previously, there was not much instruction, at least from my class. And, you know, it's very difficult to take on the role of teacher. I'm not qualified. I'm not educated in it. I don't know the new math and a lot of these things. And so it does put a burden on the parents that, you know, are difficult for many of us. And, you know, my daughter has been in a camp, you know, she's in a camp this summer, summer camp. And I know they've been going full time for quite a while. There's been no issues with COVID, you know, part of it outdoors, part of it indoors. But what I want to know is, with all of this, how do we, will there be childcare options within school or before and after care programs? And secondly, how do we compete with other public schools and towns like, you know, even Wilmington, Dorica, you know, Andover, that are going at least two full time days, and all the kids that are going into the private schools and private learning pause that are getting full time attention? I'm worried that we're going to fall behind and not get the education that our kids deserve.
Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Malone?
Yeah, I think I believe the gist of that was in regards to are our students going to fall behind, maybe compared to students in surrounding districts? And I'll go back to one of the things we talked about in in some of that is, you know, some districts have have created plans and negotiated with their unions and some haven't. So they'll have to figure out that piece as well. We believe that also what we heard predominantly from parents throughout the spring and all of the summer was to please, please, please improve the remote learning portion of whatever model we do. And we have committed a great deal of professional development. We are working diligently with our teachers' union. And we are committed and know that the time of remote learning has to improve for students. It has to be a better quality. It has to have teacher and student interaction. It has to have real time instruction. And those are things we're committed to. And those are things we're working with the teachers' union on specifically. And certainly, we understand the piece in regards to parents defaulting to the teacher at home. And and we understand that. And I think as the spring went, which began with a governor's order to have students not go to school, there was no educational component, followed by several weeks of enrichment as designed by Department of Elementary and Secondary in Education, finally to a sort of ad hoc, standards based, primary standards education model with teachers not having professional development and teachers not being able to come into school and plan and do those things. We we hope we've learned a lot from that and want to improve the quality of that remote piece. We agree that two days, whether it's four hours a day or six hours a day, is not enough instruction for any student. That's why we've tried to, and I think you can, you know, look at some of the other districts and see what their plan is for remote portion of that. We want to make sure that the learning continues all five days and is not attempted to be solely located in the in-person days of the hybrid. So and and we get it. Parents don't want to have to be the primary teacher at home. We're trying to put in and work with our union for approaches that will allow teachers to structure those remote portion of the lessons to to assist the students so that they can be self paced and work directly with the teacher and not require a parent to sit with them and go through it. But it's going to be a challenge. Any hybrid model is a challenge, no matter how you look at it.
Mr. Malone, the other piece that the caller was around childcare programs. Could you just briefly discuss the
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, so we've been working extensively with Alphabet has been working since really May and June to try to look at fall programming. They realized that their licensure under EEC and the cohort models that are identified within the hybrid likely would not allow them to run after school programs in the schools. So they have been actively searching out locations in Tewksbury. They are working directly with Mr. Montori, our town administrator, have made contact with a church in another location and have some promising leads to be able to offer not only afternoon care for those students who have in-person learning, but hopefully all day care for those students who are in a remote phase or in the Remote Learning Academy. We don't have anything finalized. If it's not able to come to fruition, it won't be from a lack of effort by Alphabet at that time. But we'll continue to support Alphabet and work in those pieces. But it would be very difficult because of the cleaning protocols we need and their licensure requirements to have them run after school programmings in the school. We are looking at morning AM programs with Alphabet in the schools if we can move on the pre cleaning protocols and look at what the budget elements will be for that added cleaning, if we're able to do that. But it's certainly something we're strongly considering, but we don't have any final answers at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez, for calling in. Brian, can I ask you if you have any other callers? Could you just hold the callers if you do for me? Because I think a lot of this stuff is going to be covered in the superintendent report. So as opposed to kind of piecemealing through it, Sue, maybe if we just have your report, which I think is going to answer and include some of that stuff that people are going to call about, that might be a more expeditious way for us to proceed at this time. So.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Yes. So just on a couple other notes, today, we had our workshop in regards to school improvement plans for the schools. I hope those in the audience were able to see that today. A huge thank you to our district leadership team that includes our principals and other administrators for their diligent work. And much of that work was a review set last year in a measure of our accomplishments compared to those goals. But also, we specifically targeted what the reopening piece in regards to the hybrid model will look like in each school at each grade level. There's certainly further discussions to to look at and work on, but that work will continue. You know, I hope, as I said, that people were able to view that. We spent a great time, great deal of time talking about student and staff safety and what some of those procedures would be and what student and what students and parents could expect scheduling wise. So and really thank the school committee. That was over a two hour meeting. Thank you for your patience. And thank you for your feedback and your questions. Also, congratulations to the Special Education Department that conducted extended year services as part of summer programming for select group of special education students at the high school, at the Dewing School, and at the Heathbrook School. Outstanding opportunity for students. Our staff jumped in. We had appropriate PPE. We utilized appropriate distancing. And we believe it was a quality experience for all students who attended. So great job there. Also, a reminder that our opening for staff is next Wednesday. And Thursday, we're looking for some welcoming opportunities, some safety training with staff in preparation for the follow up 10 days of professional development that is designed to prepare student, prepare teachers for the instructional component of the hybrid model as we open for students on the 16th. So we are looking forward to that. Also, just a bit of news, the Tewksbury Memorial High School PAC fundraiser will be August 30th at Wamisut Lanes. It'll be a drive in movie fundraiser. And Wamisut Lanes has been a great friend to Tewksbury Public Schools for many years. So we're great to see that partnership. And also that the 2020-2021 Voice of Democracy, which covers grades nine through 12, and the Patriot PEN contest, which covers grades six, seven, eight, those applications will be available from the Ryan Winn in high school principals for students interested in that in the fall. So we look forward to that. Mr. Chairman, we have the reopening plan as an agenda item later in the meeting. I'm not sure if you would want me to hit that right now and take it out of order or wait for that time.
I think that makes sense. As like I said, I think a lot, you know, people that are looking for information certainly
Sure.
I think I'd rather have it presented upfront as opposed to, like I said, piecemealing it and and taking it one question at a time. So if you
Sure. And the reopening plan was submitted last Friday to DESE as required. A huge thank you to the reopening task force that included parents, town officials, Board of Health, administrators, members of the Tewksbury Teachers Association, custodians, secretary, other personnel throughout the district, and other community members. We really thank them for their efforts. We will continue on with the task force. They meet weekly. A big element was deciphering much of the DESE guidance that referred to reopening. And also, the Tewksbury Teachers Association's provided some additional information for the task force to consider. So we will continue to work with that along with the district leadership team and the school committee to continually look at the reopening plan. And just as we do that, after the submittal to DESE, and certainly the school committee vote and committal to the hybrid model, some of the elements of the plan, we will continually look at. Some of that will be flexible. We just received new guidance in regard to the COVID response, specific to staff members or students or anyone who is considered a contact in whether a test, a COVID-19 test, negative test, can outweigh a 14 day isolation or quarantine. And then in the previous guidance from DESE, it said it could. And in the newest guidance, it allows it aligns with CDC and says basically that you can get tested if you want, but the 14 day quarantine will still hold. Also, there's new information coming out at the state level. I don't have anything in my hands just yet in writing, but it looks like for the fall, students will be required to have flu shots as part of their vaccination records. It is silent in the information I have right now of whether staff members will be required as well. But there will be a flu shot element that will connect with some of this as we move forward. So as we get more information on that, we will certainly keep people updated. Once again, and I don't know how much of this is repeated from the workshop that we had, or certainly that from some of the previous questions we've had in regards to the partial four hour day versus a six hour day. But just a reminder that for special education, those students who are identified as high needs will have the opportunity for additional time where that is somewhat in an individual determination based on student need. So I can't make a blanket statement that students who are high needs would qualify for a four days of in-person instruction as opposed to two. But there will be consideration made for students who are qualified as high needs. The Special Education Department is currently still fine tuning. There is a very technical algorithm that determines whether a student meets the high needs in special education, that they have to cross reference some of the documents in special education to make that determination. And they want to make sure it's accurate. But those parents should be aware of that by tomorrow or Friday at the latest. But we'll continue to work on all of those aspects. In regards to some of the elements that we continue to work on, again, as we talked about in a little reference to some of the information in relation to a four hour day in person as opposed to a six hour day, one of the things we're monitoring closely is staffing. As again, we have a significant number of staff members seeking leaves in relation to the COVID pandemic, what our ability will be to backfill those positions with substitutes, how many of What our ability will be to backfill those positions with substitutes, how many of those people may be able to utilize an accommodation and teach students in the remote learning academy is a bit uncertain at this time, but staffing is something we're going to have to monitor closely to make sure that we have enough staff in the building for the in-person portion of the hybrid model. And as we've said many times, we continue to negotiate with the Tewksbury Teachers Association, specific to the model, the hybrid model, and the other pieces that will certainly impact students and family. So we will continue to move in that direction. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if there's any other areas of that you wanted me to address.
Oh, I think that's good. I'll just open it up to my colleagues, and then we can go back to Brian. I'll start with Mr. Cutlass. Do you have any questions or thoughts or concerns?
Not at this time, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Demos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions at this time. Mine were answered during the workshop time.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Keith, I'm all set.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm going to turn back to Brian. Do we have any callers there?
We do have a caller, Mr. Chairman. Call him whenever you're ready. Caller, you can go ahead.
Can I ask a name?
Yep, go ahead.
My question is, because I am a driver for Tewksbury, is with this whole hybrid thing, half-day thing, first, you asked us to vote if which one we wanted. We voted, but as a driver, I have three children in the district. I have a first grader, a second grader, and an eighth grader. But I'm a driver, and I'm sure it works for other people that have students and work. Am I expected to fly home after I drop off my second load of kids to get them on for two? What are the repercussions? Are we thinking about that?
Ma'am, could I just get your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Jen, I'm on Sesame Street.
Thank you very much. Mr. Malone?
I heard the piece about "Am I Expected To?" and then it got garbled. Can someone help me with what the question was?
Jen, are you there?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Could you just repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yes, the question was, is I'm sure most parents work. How are we expected to get home, especially when we have multiple kids in different grades, to get them on for their afternoon Zoom meetings or whatever? Is there repercussions for that? Because I am a bus driver, so there's no way I'm getting home to get my kids fed and on for two and whatever time wind has to get on.
Right. So I think I have it, Mr. Chairman. Right, and I certainly don't want to repeat myself, but I think one of the things we're looking at is twofold. One, we're looking at, hopefully, far more teacher-involved, remote experience, where the student is connecting directly with the teacher during that time, and hopefully, that is, that relationship will assist in the student completing the work in the remote fashion. Secondly, as we stated before, we're also looking to make sure that we have elements of flexibility, that if a parent is working or unable to be at home, that they would be able to complete the portion of the lesson or the task either in the same way or an alternative way later in the day, later in the evening, when it's more convenient for the parent. So we're working on both those issues. And again, hybrid model with, again, whether it's four hours a day, six hours a day, if it's two hours a week, these conflicts are absolutely going to be present, and we want to do our best to make sure we help parents navigate it as much as possible.
Okay, just understand, so they do have the option to go on later in the evening.
Mr. Malone?
Hi there, this is Brenda Regan, the Assistant Superintendent. That is our absolute goal. You hear the term synchronous, that means at the same time, and you hear the term asynchronous, that means not at the same time. And we're very well aware that not all families' schedules are going to meet, whether we're in hybrid, fully remote, they don't meet when we're all in person. And what we're going to try to achieve is quality synchronous, at-the-same-time lessons, and quality asynchronous lesson planning. That means that, for example, for one of your students or one of your children, if you're not home, but that remote learning portion has started, let's pretend it's videotaped, you'll be able to review that lesson with your child later in the day, and that's our goal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Brian?
Not at the moment, but I would give it a minute or two.
Okay. I assume that concluded your report, Superintendent?
It did, Mr. Chairman, and I'll hand it off to Ms. Regan.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Regan?
Thank you. I'm going to step a little away from the comprehensive reopening plan, although that is all-consuming for not only us, we know, for our parents and students. But let me give you a few updates first. At this time, we've had over 100 teachers actually working on their curriculum maps. And when parents hear that, I don't know if they understand what I'm talking about when I talk about curriculum planning and mapping, but that is everything that is included in the teaching and learning cycle, what kids will learn, how they'll learn it, how they'll be assessed, and how they'll plan those lessons. This summer, there's been an enhanced focus on remote learning lessons that reflect and mirror in-person lessons. So we're asking teachers to flexibly look at their curriculum maps and work on them. And as I said, over 100 teachers have been working this summer, over 1,500 hours on planning for reopening lesson planning with some of the new tools that we've purchased and resources for our classrooms. So we've also had 90 teachers, over 90 teachers, taking advantage of a remote learning professional development session with our digital learning coach, Ms. Lisa Bailey. The session is meant to enhance remote learning skills for all of our teachers. It's obviously a key focus of our back-to-school PD plan, as whether in the hybrid model or in a full remote model or remote learning academy, remote learning is a big component of our instructional process these days. So we've heard loud and clear from our families that we need to improve remote learning in this district for our students to be more successful. We agree. We will continue to prioritize remote learning in our professional development program, especially in the areas, and this is where those curriculum maps come back, especially in the areas of consistency. We just talked about synchronous learning and instruction at the same time, and quality asynchronous instruction at different times of the day. So not only can parents review the lesson and instruction, but students can revisit the learning as they need for greater understanding. We know, and we heard again loud and clear from our parents, that our students need synchronous time at the same time for them to be with their peers, with their A or B cohort, with the whole class, to learn and collaborate together. So we will be focusing our professional development as well on that. So at this time, we have been asking our parents to please read the reopening plan. We realize that not every detail is spelled out, as we're still in the negotiating cycle with our bargaining units, but we do need you to fill out that survey. And we know we're asking a lot of you to commit to whether or not your child will be coming back physically to our school or totally in remote learning at home. And we understand that the four-hour hybrid model day versus a six-hour student day in person is a challenge. And our goal is that's how we're starting. Our goal, and I hope you've heard me say this over and over and over again, is we're moving towards a full day, and we're moving towards all our students back in a full day. And I'd like to stay very, very optimistic that we can do that safely, like many other businesses and industries are doing. And, you know, that's our goal. So again, parents, please fill out that survey by this Friday, because that window of opportunity for us to create those cohorts, our classes, look at our high school courses, balance those classes so they're safely distanced, and that we are able to plan for that transportation is imperative that we have your decision. I'd like to then share with you that this Monday coming up, August 24th, and Tuesday, August 25th, kicks off our mentor and induction program for our new teachers. So we're moving and grooving with bringing some people back. That mentor program will be here at the Tewksbury Memorial High School. We have a very small class of 2021 of new teachers. Right now, we have seven new teachers, and a handful of them are one-year long-term subs for one-year maternity leaves. So it's a small group. We feel like having them together here, learning safely distanced, is going to be the appropriate model of learning for them. And on Wednesday, 8:25, is our opening day for all of the district. And we're doing things a little differently this year, where our staff won't all converge upon the high school, because that would be too large of a crowd, and our staff are planned to be back at their home school, where the learning will happen remotely from their class. So again, this Wednesday is back-to-school for our teachers and Thursday as well. I'd like to take a minute, though, we're going to get to the calendar a little bit later. Monday, August 31st, kicks off 10 days of training for our staff, not for students, for our staff to come for the reopening of school. The focus of that training, and if you watched the workshop, you saw this, is reopening, and it is to train not only our staff, but our students and families, to provide communications to them. It's for social-emotional learning and trauma-responsive training, so that our teachers can help themselves and then help their students as they re-enter back into a school. It's significant amount of time on remote learning tools, new curriculum resources that we've provided to blend the in-person instruction with remote learning. And for those updates on all the curriculum mapping that's happened over the summer, as well, we'll be starting our long-term goal of equitable schools, teaching our students about diversity, belonging, inclusion, anti-racism, with a focus on currently using our curriculum bias tools that we have available for our students and staff to take a hard look at the resources we're using and make sure that we're addressing areas of bias. And then finally, as I said, a portion of those 10 days will be for our staff to communicate, connect with our students and families, to prepare them for their first day of school, which is September 16th. I just also wanted to let the public know, and it was a question that was asked during the workshop, we will be publishing the school committee workshop with all of our administrators that highlight the progress of the 1920 school year, and that look forward to the goals we have in reopening and more to the website tomorrow. That concludes my update.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Regan. I'm just going to check in. Mr. Cutlass, any thoughts, concerns, comments, or questions?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Demos?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson?
Not at this.
Great, and I don't have anything either. Come with Brian? Brian, are you there?
We do have a caller.
Okay, put him through, please.
Caller, go ahead. Caller, you on the phone? Hold on one second.
Okay.
Okay, we have a caller. Yep, go ahead. Caller, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dana Valero. I live at 189 Pelt Street. I just had a question. My son is going into kindergarten, and I was curious at how many hours is he going to be expected to be in front of a computer on his remote learning days, the three days that he doesn't go into school, like a certain amount of time? He has to be on there to do his learning?
Good question, Mrs. Valero. Mrs. Regan?
Yes, that's a great question. We clearly understand that to have a five-year-old sit in front of a computer for, let's just say, the Wednesday or the remote days, all day long, is unacceptable. The computer will be needed to access the lessons, the instruction, whether it's a live instructional piece from the teacher or synchronous, a video, then there would be activities and a company that. We do not expect kindergarten students to be on the, we don't expect any student to be on the computer from start to finish in the school day.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Brian, do you have anyone else there?
We do, hold on one second. You're all set?
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Hi, this is Christine Parkett, Turnwood House.
Hi, Mrs. Parkett, how are you?
I'm good, thanks, Keith. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
I just had a question, and I know Brenda...
I'm sorry, caller, we lost that call. Hold on one second. Go ahead. Caller, go ahead.
Let's try this again. So I'm just looking at what the goal or the hope for the kids, let's say, in cohort B is doing remote learning, will B be watching the lesson live and joining in that way? And, or will the work be provided through, like, say, Google Classroom, for them to do on their own during a certain time and have a certain timeline to pass it in? Is that something that you're working on? I'm sure it's probably not ironed out or worked out yet, but is that something that we're trying to do now, where to have group B join in live through Zoom or Google Classroom?
Again, great questions, and these are certainly questions that we are working through as well. I'd love to be able to tell you that every class all day could livestream to the students that are home remote, and quite frankly, we just are unable to do that. Unable because our bandwidth just can't handle that. But what I can tell you is, our goal would be that there will be opportunities all throughout that day for the, and again, A, let's pretend A is in person and B is remote, that the B, during, let's say it's the English class, that the B cohort student has opportunities to either watch in a synchronous lesson that reflects what's happening in the class, or time to be on a meet with the teacher. These would be our goals, at least for the schedule of the day, and that they would be reflecting the scope and sequence of lessons that are planned, whether in-person or remote. So while they can't, we can't livestream all day from every class, it's just not something we can do. We would, we're looking for opportunities that the B cohort student is actually interacting at the same time with similar or same lessons. Now, available staffing is going to be really critical here, because we don't, and it's been a focus of the district, to not let that B cohort kiddo go all the way through the day, or even all the way through those two days, without some interaction with a teacher or a staff member that can support their learning, because four hours is a long time before the child is touching base with the teacher. So these negotiations, these places, what our goal is that the remote learner has a teacher to be helping with that instruction and support throughout the day.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Thank you, Mrs. Parkett. Brian, do we have anyone else?
We do, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Can I go back to that question as well? Because I know people have heard things like that there'd be repercussions or kiddos would be punished. We would have check-ins, that was a term used for attendance, participation, there'll be classroom check-ins, but, you know, we don't have any punishment or repercussion when a student's not able to check in live, let's say, on the remote day. However, we do know, if you had an opportunity to see the workshop, our student and family support speaker, Brian, is working with our principals and then with our teachers, what will be the method of assessment and participation accountability that we will use when families need flexibility? So we're aware of both, you know, the... You know, the state has been very firm on that the days count, attendance counts and accountability, you know, to the course, the classroom counts, but we understand that if we're having a structured routine schedule and that doesn't align to every family on those remote days, we have to be flexible too.
Great, thank you for that clarity, Mrs. Regan. Brian, do we have a caller?
We do, Mr. Chair. Call her, go ahead.
Hi, this is Stephanie Griffin, thirty-three, Martha Ave.
Hello, Mrs. Griffin, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. So I have a few concerns. I also have a child going into kindergarten. He was at the Dewing Preschool for two years prior. So my concern being, as you stated to the last caller, that you don't expect the kindergarten children to be on computers all day, which I do appreciate, however, how are they building this foundation that they're going to need for school going into first grade, second grade? Kindergarten is is an integral part of their education, and I don't know how my child is going to get that foundation with a half a day in school and maybe an hour online and doing some worksheets at home while I'm working. It's just the frustration level I think we're feeling is because we don't have any answers. And tonight, I know that you can't give answers either, but when are we going to get the communication from the teachers' union, which is what you continually say that we're waiting for? When are we going to have these answers? Because it's August nineteenth. You know, we're in the final hours and we're to make a binding decision on your survey, and how do we do that? How do we, how do we as parents make an educated decision at this point?
Okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Regan.
Okay, you can hear me?
I can hear you, thank you.
Yes, so I I'm going to first address the kindergarten and instructional question. So we have a four-hour out of a six-hour instructional day in person, and if you notice, we've front-loaded. What we paid very special attention with our K to four and all of our grade levels is core content. We know kindergarteners are learning to learn, learning to read, learning to write, learning to work with numbers. That's what their in-person time is, and the remote learner will be equally learning those same things. Let me talk a little bit about the remote learning plan as it pertains to perhaps math. We are purchasing individual kits of manipulatives so that that lesson, we're going to be using a new math resource, so that digital math lesson will reflect the exact same lesson that the student's getting live in the class, and they'll have the exact same manipulatives at home, because we need, just as you said, our kindergarteners to get that, those foundations, whether they're with us for, it's really two-thirds of the day, or whether they're remote. And and then, because we're, and every grade is integral to the learning. Every grade really needs as much content as they can in person with a teacher. That's our ultimate goal. And the the second part, I think, of the question was, how can you make a decision? And I agree with you. This is probably one of the hardest decisions we're making and planning for as well in these times, but I would say this, the decision you're really making, and I know that it's certainly not simple, and I and I don't mean to make to simplify it, but is whether your child will participate in any in-person learning that we can plan for right now, or will it be all remote? So what I'm hearing you say, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, is that in-person time with their teacher is very valuable, and I and I get it, and this is how we feel, we want more of it too, and we'll strive to get there. But right now, the decision is, will your child come into the class and learn how to learn with the teacher and learn how to learn as a remote learner while with the teacher?
And while I appreciate that, four hours, for two days for a five-year-old? I mean, we're, we as parents are working from either home or in an office. A five-year-old is not independently learning on an a laptop in a kitchen in their house while their parent is working, or while their their parent has to find some place for their child, their five-year-old, to go for assistance with remote learning. And that also, if these centers can open up for remote learning, why aren't our children being taught in school? These questions, obviously, you can't answer all of them right now, and I appreciate that because you don't have all of the answers because you're waiting on other factors. But we're just hanging by a thread. You know, we we obviously want the best for our children, which is what you as educators want as well, but this just isn't, it's not okay. Like, we're, yes, we're in a pandemic, we've all had to pivot, we've all had to shift and make exceptions and do the best that we can, but we're all still working. We're all still leaving our homes, and we're working, and we're doing it safely. And, you know, I I just feel that our children, K through four, most importantly, need as much face time as possible. These these children, they're not independent workers, and we as parents are not teachers. And I feel, I just feel it's a disservice to our children, unfortunately.
Hey, Brenda, this is, I just wanted to jump real quick. I think one thing that's important for all the parents out there to just sort of remember is what we're talking about is where they're beginning on September sixteenth, not where they're going to be for the whole year. So while this isn't ideal, this isn't a perfect thing, this is where we're starting today. And, you know, we're going to start there. And it's, hold on, I was, I was-
We're starting today? We don't even know where that is yet.
I, I, there are a lot of things out, and we have, you know, thirty days or so that we're going to be working on those final answers. Unfortunately, they're not all decisions that we can just make in a vacuum. But I guess I just want to stress to parents out there that, and I don't want to debate with you, that's not worthwhile. All I want to say is that this is where the kids are going to start, and our hope, our goal, is to get these kids back into school. So that, I just wanted to get that on the record. Thanks.
Absolutely. It's a hundred percent not a debate, because I know that there's not an answer. It's simply a statement that within the last time that we all saw that we're we're in the same, we're getting, you know, it's, we haven't progressed much, unfortunately, and I guess that's just what I want to say. It's absolutely not a debate. I understand that.
Mrs. Griffin, this is Keith Sullivan. I can tell you, I share all of your concerns. We have those conversations. We've met several times. We've been sending proposals back and forth. I'm obviously, you know, can't get involved, and I'm not going to drag public negotiations, but we share in all those concerns that you mentioned with regards to working and mitigation and whatnot. Please understand, please, we're trying our best, we're doing all that we can. We can't make people feel safe, we can't make people agree to go to work, and until we can find some common ground, and I'm hopeful that we can get there, you know, we all share, no one wants to see any more academic or social regression. We want, you know, we've had great support, not only from, you know, residents, but townspeople here, a lot of the towns, you know, there's a huge population that wants people back into school, and I just ask that you respect the legal process that we're going through that, you know, involves us, you know, having to negotiate and bargain this stuff, you know, so our students, staff, and all of our families feel safe. So I share in your plight. Believe me, I have two children in the school district. You know, I'll happily, you know, answer any questions, or if you email me, I know I probably owe some people some emails, I'm a day or two behind, but, you know, we really, everyone on this board, and Mr. Malone and Mrs. Regan, the town manager, we're all trying to get behind, you know, getting kids back eventually all in. So I thank you for your call, and just continue to please respectfully ask for your patience. I know it's difficult, but.
Do you, just lastly, do you have any timeframe on negotiations? Is there, is there like an end date to that, or is this just going?
The statute's pretty clear that you have to negotiate in good faith, both parties. We have done that. You know, at some point, we also recognize and acknowledge the legal obligation that we had, that we have to provide an education, you know, for all of our kids in town. So unfortunately, there's no, you know, drop dead date, but, you know, that's, that's where we're at.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
No problem. And Brian, anyone else?
Um, there is another caller. Hold on one second.
Sure.
Call her, go ahead. You're all set? Call her.
Hello?
Hello?
Yep, just your TVs down in the background, please.
You're on.
Hi, my name, my name is Erin Hud. I'm at sixty-seven Catamount Road.
How are you?
Hi, I'm good, thank you. My question is, and first, I guess, I just have a comment, and then I want to ask a question. I've heard of the phrase negotiating with the teachers' union quite a bit in this meeting, and, you know, it feels a little bit like that the teachers' union is really calling the shots here and not the parents. And I understand that these are negotiations, but usually the word negotiate implies some kind of compromise, or, you know, where both sides are having some some needs met. And it just really feels like, I mean, I guess my my question is, can we have more transparency around what these different employer groups, like the teachers' union, what is, you know, what are they asking for? What are they demanding that's making it so we can only have two days in person for four hours? Which I think, you know, we all agree that that's not okay.
Mrs. Hud, thank you for your question. I would just direct you to the union. Obviously, I can't speak for the union. Our obligation is to, you know, negotiate in all three models, an environment that we believe is going to be safe and productive, and quite honestly, be equivalent to the quality of education that people in Tuxbury have grown accustomed to. So that's the approach that I can only speak for on our side. I can't nor will I speak for the union. That's really something I think that you would have to direct in that fashion. Thank you for your call. Brian, do you have anyone else?
I would give it another ten seconds, but, yep, we do.
I'm Sean, and I'm calling thirteen fifty-two Main Street. We're trying to fill out the the survey online, and it keeps telling us that we cannot hit the it's saying we can't actually hit the, we have to do the hybrid. So I'm trying to figure out why it, what happened? All right, if you choose remote, then the next page says you're choosing hybrid. So we don't want to get the kids to school in the beginning, we're choosing remote, but yet we're not getting, giving the choice to choose hybrid. So I don't know if it's a problem with the online thing, but I figured I'd address it.
Thank you, Brian. Sean, sorry, Mrs. Regan?
Yeah, this is a different survey. There are only two choices. I mean, after you fill in some pertinent information that we would need, there are only two choices. You are either choosing hybrid, which is sending your child back to in-person learning to the level that we are able to have right now, or you're choosing Remote Learning Academy. This isn't a way that we can vote between the three models anymore.
Okay.
Okay, so you are, at this point, you're choosing to send your child back with the model that we have voted on and will start the school year with? That's hybrid. And if you don't want that, then you're voting to do Remote Learning Academy at home.
Well, then definitely voting to Learn Academy at home, industry's not giving me the opportunity to do it on that.
I, I could, I can look at the survey, but it's, I mean, we're, we're well over eighteen-hundred families, and I can tell you, this is the first time I'm hearing that you don't have either of the choices. There's really only, I think, two questions, and one is, will you be using remote, hybrid or remote? And then, what would your transportation need be? So I'll look at it while, after I stop talking, I'll take a look at the survey. And can I just tell you this? I think you said your name was Sean. If you're unable to complete the survey, you're welcome to call our office or email myself or Mr. Malone or Ms. Cutlass, and if you provide your child's names and the address and what your choice is, we'll, we'll log that in for you.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Thank you for your call. Brian?
Yep, we have another call. Call her, go ahead.
Hi, it's Jerry O'Neill, Merrimack Meadows. I have a question regarding this. What's going to happen, it's a multi-fold question, what's going to happen if there isn't exposure with the children and the staff is exposed? You know, whether it be the bus driver or the, you know, the custodians and the teachers, because there's a lot of layers to this here. What happens with them and the services that are provided?
Great question, Mr. O'Neill. I yield the floor to Superintendent Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Much of that was covered in the plan under the COVID scenarios, most of which is guidance directly from the state. We have worked closely with Susan Sawyer from the Department of Public Health, and the town nurse, and our own lead nurse in regards to these pieces. There is some general pieces that would be looked at to determine who would be a direct contact and what constitutes a direct contact, and there's even updated guidance coming out from the state on that in relation to being within six feet of someone who has identified as being testing positive or possibly symptomatic for at least fifteen minutes. So if we had a positive case in the school, whether that was a teacher or staff, we would immediately contact the Town Board of Health in conjunction with our own lead nurse. They would begin to analyze the situation and determine who may be a direct contact. That's why we've constructed the additional nursing offices in the schools as waiting areas in case someone is either A, symptomatic, or B, identified as a contact, so that they can go to a safe location where they would be picked up by a parent, or if it was a staff member, they would go home. The quarantine and isolation portion of the plan would kick in at that time, and while any further contact tracing in conjunction with the town may go to family members or other pieces of that nature, certainly, it's outlined in our cleaning protocol in the plan in regards to specific intensive cleaning in areas that we may identify where someone would have a positive result to attest and or be identified as a direct contact, as supplemental cleaning in those areas. Certainly, part of that is just situational, depending on what point of the day we find out, what element of contact we could possibly be, might be a whole class, might be two students in the class, might be the teacher. So some of that requires some coordination and direct connection with our Town Board of Health. But again, that is is fairly well outlined in a graph in the plan, and, you know, this pandemic will likely change over time, and maybe some of the science and some of the protocols and reactoring will change as well. That's why we want to continue to update the plan whenever any of that information comes up.
Mr. O'Neill, the flow chart, if you will, that Superintendent Malone was referring to is on page forty-one of the plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
If, if a child has to go home, who's going to oversee that area that, you know, is that teacher going to be tested? Is that teacher, if they present positive as COVID, what happens?
Mr. Malone?
If, uh, I'm just trying to understand the question. If the child has to go home and the teacher tests positive?
If the child, if the child has to go home and the teacher that's in that area and they test positive, what happens with them? That, you know, like are they placed on sick leave? Are they covered under a, like a family, you know, administrative leave, a family medical leave act? There's, you know, because it's?
Right. There's two, there's two new COVID leaves for personnel that are federal. One is in specific relation to family medical leave, uh, in regards to their own childcare, but also it covers anyone who may either be identified as a contact or test positive and their, uh, their requirement to quarantine. Uh, so the quarantine time, which is typically fourteen days, would be covered under a leave status. Obviously, if a, if a staff member becomes sick, that would bring into their sick leave time at that time.
So it comes off of their sick leave and not like an administrative leave because it's in, on the job exposure? Is that what you're saying?
It, it really would be situational depending on if someone is sick or someone is quarantining or someone has a positive test. Um, there are leaves for that as well, but it, it would be situational depending on, on what the circumstances. There's multiple leaves available to staff in their union contract in addition to the COVID leaves out there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, for your questions. Brian, do you have another caller?
Uh, no, at this moment, but again, give it a.
Well, we're going to get to, uh, Mr. Libby, uh, for the, uh, business, uh, managers' report update then. Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Um, just a quick update. We, uh, continue in the business office to prepare for, um, school opening and staff return next week. Uh, cleaning is going on, extensive cleaning in the buildings, finishing up projects, uh, as we normally do in the summertime. Um, we're preparing, uh, school signage, uh, without working with a, a printing vendor in our copy center to produce, um, signs that we'll, um, we'll be using in the school when the students return. Um, and we continue to, um, block our appropriate items and quantities of PPE, um, that will, we anticipate we'll need, um, when students and staff return to school. Um, we need, know we'll need to be, make adjustments to all this and be flexible. Um, just as an example, we learned, um, quite a bit from the two-week extended school year program of what, um, types of things, um, the staff, um, wanted more of and used more than we thought of. Um, so we've, we've been able to adjust our quantities, just with the two-week sample. So we know we're going to have to be flexible and, um, and do whatever we need to do to meet the needs of the students and staff upon their return.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Libby. Uh, Mr. Cutlass, any comments or questions?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, not at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Demos?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Wilson?
Not at this time.
I don't have any as well. And I'm going to move on to the consent agenda as well at this time. Do any of my colleagues have any issues or comments, question regarding tonight's consent agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chair? Keith?
Yeah. I think Keith's screening.
Brian, are you there?
Yep.
Fro, can I? Yeah, I think we. For my colleagues, does everyone, does anyone have questions regarding tonight's consent agenda?
I, Mr. Chair, I had a few, um, comments and questions. Um, so in regards to, um, the consent agenda, I wanted to first start out by saying, um, what a great idea that fundraiser is right now through the pack. Um, I wanted to extend a great big thank you to Wamisett Lanes for their continued support of Tewksbury Public Schools. I think in, you know, the situation that we're in, fundraising is going to be quite limited. Um, and this is just a great opportunity for our students to, um, reap the benefits of the generosity of the people of our community. And I wanted to, you know, commend them and say a thank you to them. Um, I also wanted to talk about, um, the retirements that are within this consent agenda and extend my best wishes to them. Um, that those staff members that are listed in there, um, have worked diligently for our district and I want to wish them all the best in their future endeavors and let them know they will be greatly missed here in the Tewksbury Public School system. Um, as far as appendix B positions that are listed in the consent agenda, I see that some of them, um, whether we're hybrid or remote, um, would be happening. I'm wondering in the cases of things like, um, um, like art shows and choral directors and things in that matter, have we discussed whether those will happen, whether we have a virtual environment or, um, in person? Like hopefully we will be back by the springtime?
Yep.
I think, uh, Miss Demos, I think some of those are going to be dependent on the activity. We certainly have run. Uh, we ran the art show last year virtually. We're willing to explore any virtual options on those pieces. Uh, certainly we have to be concerned that, uh, any student activities not only are mindful of distancing, proper precautions, PPE, but one of the elements that is at the base of the hybrid model is considering cohorts of students and when they are together and in what fashion. So, uh, as we navigate sports, as we navigate other activities, I think we're going to have to put a little bit of a lens onto each individual activity, see if it can be done in person. If it can't, see if it can be done virtually and will it accomplish the same task? So we'll look at all those. Some of those we very, we accomplished in the spring, so we've got some experience doing it. Um, you know, the, the, the break at the time in the spring came right at the end of March, which is kind of a, a unique time for a break in it because many things were ending and it while others were beginning. So we'll, we'll look at these logically. I think there'll be opportunities. Uh, as you just mentioned about fundraising, I could see certainly clubs and activities by students being thought of in different ways. And how can we explore that and how can we make that happen safely? So we'll continue to look at all those and we're open to all of them running if they can run safely and, and then they can run well. Some of them may not run. We'll have to see.
I was excited to see the PLC facilitator in there. So that makes me think that whether we're remote or in person, we'll still have, um, common planning time across the grade levels, um, with these PLC facilitators. I'm correct in that assumption?
Yes.
You're welcome. Okay. Um, and then what I think is my last question on this is, um, in regards to the enrollment data, um, I do appreciate seeing that. I like to see how fluid it is. I'm wondering if, um, as we get the information, if we could be provided with information, um, with the results of the survey so that we can really kind of keep abreast to how many students stay at each one of these grade levels in each one of the buildings so that we can plan accordingly. Um, you know, as we get the Remote Learning Academy numbers in, um, and our hybrid numbers in, I'd be curious to see that along with this number of staff leaves and, um, what the staff wishes are so that we can make sure that we're being proactive in our planning. That's all the questions I have in regards to the consent agenda and thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Anyone else? Hey, what is the pleasure of the board regarding tonight's consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented here tonight.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. The consent agenda is passed. I'm going to go back to Brian to check in one more time. Do we have any callers, Brian?
We do have a call. Go ahead, caller.
Uh, hi, this is Lauren Wolfinger at four thirty-eight Pleasant Street.
How are you tonight?
Good. How are you?
Very well.
I'm wondering, are you able to provide a little more clarity on what the Remote Learning Academy will look like? Like more specifically, would my, say, second grader be learning the same exact curriculum that the second grader that lives down the street that chose hybrid would be learning? Is it virtual face-to-face within a, with an assigned teacher on a similar schedule? Or is it, hey, here's a list of videos to watch and work sheets to do that might not align with what the in-school students are doing? I'm just not clear on, on how those two are going to overlap or not.
Yep. Excellent question.
Yes. Uh, it's Assistant Superintendent Brenda Regan. Um, I think you said your name was Lauren, and I know that's a question on many parents' minds. Um, I, I, I'm going to do the best to answer with what we hope it is, what we certainly want it to be and what we certainly have heard it needs to be. And, and yes, uh, the, the student would be assigned, a teacher, again, a available staff is, is, is information we just don't have right now. It's our absolute goal that students who are in Remote Learning Academy are following the same scope and sequence, if you will, of learning objectives and standards. How those lessons are presented still remains to be seen. We know that, um, often it will be asynchronous. We don't have the capability of live streaming everyone who's at home into the class, but we do know there'll be, have to be synchronous time with the teacher who is assigned or the, or the, um, teachers who are assigned to the Remote Learning Academy cohort.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, not at the second, but I'm, there's been a couple of people calling in, so I would leave it open for a couple more minutes.
Okay. Mr. Cutlass, would you like to queue up your elementary school building committee report while we're waiting?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, uh, our committee is meeting on a regular basis. Uh, the, uh, the contractor, the general contractor, Consigly, is on site. The site work is ongoing. Uh, they're working six days a week. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of activity there. I think pretty soon this month, they're going to begin the foundations for the new school as well as for, uh, the field house, if it hasn't already begun. So they're underway. They fully staffed the job and, uh, everything is going well. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass. Brian, check back in with you.
Oh, my God, I keep getting disconnected when people talk.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Oh, hi, this is Sally Robel, fifty-four Whitehead Ave. Um, I actually have a couple of quick questions. Um, my, my first question is regarding the teacher survey where eighty percent of the teachers said that they wanted the hybrid half-day model. Um, my colleagues and I have been looking through our emails and we're trying to find that survey. Nowhere did we actually understand that that hybrid model meant it was going to be automatically a half-day model. Is it possible that it was some misunderstanding?
Mr. Malone?
Um, so that's my first question. And then my second question, um, revolves around the synchronous learning. Um, I myself have a DLC student and an incoming kindergartner. And if I'm required to be in the building all day and, um, there is actually no adult home to get my children after school, not only can't they log on, however, there's not even an adult home to watch them. Um, and I understand that the learning can take place anytime throughout the day.
Uh, I'm sorry, we lost her. I'll get the call back.
I think we got her questions. Uh, Mrs. Regan, would you like to take a crack at that, please? Thank you.
Sure. Um, well, when we shared out to both parents and teachers, the AARBB, if you will, the weekly schedule and sample daily schedules, we shared out, um, what that could, what that looked like in learning time at school and remote learning. So I'm not sure how there was a misunderstanding. Uh, certainly the details of, of the daily schedule need to be further fleshed out. We needed to do feasibility on how the, um, I know people keep calling it a half-hour day, but the four-hour day, the modified full day, if you will, and the full day could look at each school. So there's more specificity to our, uh, plan right now. But when we did survey both parents and, and pa- and teachers, we provided a sample of both week on, week off, AARBB, and then, uh, the, the half-day, as people are calling it, and the full day. So, um, there were samples presented. They were presented in the workshop and they were certainly presented to the tax force, to the representatives of all the groups. Um, and then when we surveyed, we had approximately eighty percent of our teachers preferring the four-hour day with remote learning at the end of the day. And there were pros and cons listed with both. What were the benefits of each type of schedule? Uh, and then when we surveyed parents, teachers and aides, I will say, um, uh, prioritize the four-hour hybrid day. Parents said, I think it was fifty-seven percent or fifty-two percent to whatever that offset would be, forty-three or forty-seven percent, uh, preferred the full day versus the four-hour day. So we looked at all those pros and cons and all those needs. And, um, this is how we have come to the hybrid model we're at right now.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
As far as I could, I, I, I don't really know how to further, um, answer. I think what Ms. Robel is, is, um, you know, describing is situations that we're hearing from parents overall. Any type of remote learning or any type of not full day, not full week is going, is difficult and it definitely is a disruption and, uh, difficult on families that have kiddos that need to go home. And when we realize that, and again, our goal and certainly was the state and Desi's goal was prioritize all-in learning. And the restrictions and the barriers and the process that we've been through to get where we are, really, um, we detailed every one of those restrictions and barriers. And we're here, we are today as a way to start. We still prioritize all-in learning. We still know that that's the goal we want to get to, not just for daycare because it's best for our kids and we need to do that in the safest way possible. So I don't know how to better answer the daycare piece at the end of the day, except, you know, we hope our teachers, um, and our parents are going to be partnering as best as they can to, to make the remote learning piece work for their kiddo.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Brian?
Uh, we do have another call. Caller, are you there? Yep, go ahead.
Okay, um, this is Kristen Valencourt, twenty Ballard Street. Um, just want to thank the board for the opportunity to ask a question tonight. Um, was wondering if the board could comment if there's any thought or plans on incorporating any sort of pilot testing programs, whether it's among the staff or students across the board. I have heard of other, um, uh, districts that are looking into that as a way to possibly detect asymptomatic, um, you know, exposures within the school. And I'm wondering if, if Tewksbury is, is one of those, um, districts that are looking into that.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for your question, Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes. Um, so I, I'm not aware of districts who have, have taken this on in regards to, uh, testing mechanisms. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, so I'm not aware of districts who have taken this on in regards to testing mechanisms. There is talk that came out from the governor last week in regards to possible systematic testing of staff and/or students in all schools. There has been additional talk between the DESE Commissioner and the governor around that. Again, I'm not aware of a district that's doing preemptive testing. I know it's a discussion at the state level, but I think if, between the funding of the testing and the mandating of the testing, both of which would likely have to come from the state level.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you for your call, Christine. Brian, do you have another caller?
For you.
Yep, we do have another call. Go ahead, caller.
Hi.
Go ahead.
I have a question and concern to bring up to the board.
Okay. One of you ready?
Okay, just a sec. Let me put the volume down.
Thank you.
Can I just get your name and address for the record, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Gracie DeBolito calling.
How are you tonight?
Good. Who am I speaking with?
This is Keith Sullivan, the chairman of the school committee. Welcome.
Hi, Keith. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity to ask questions. It's been very difficult to get through. I know lots of people calling. I do wanna express my concern. I know. Oh, sure. It's Grace DeBolito from 11 Allison Way.
Yeah, I got that, Grace. You're good.
Caller, do you just wanna make sure the TV's down, because I think you might be getting a little bit delayed.
Okay, I'm not on a TV, but I'm on a laptop. Okay. So my concern is basically, I know everyone's trying to negotiate, then put something in place, and this is not set in stone yet, correct? So.
That is correct.
Concern for many parents are that they are going to have to try to organize their schedule according to the hybrid plan. Whether they work at home, parents, guardians, or they work outside the home, it's gonna be a very difficult situation to manage, especially for the parents that are not going to be home and are required to be at work full-time. So I speak for myself. I'm confident on how everything's gonna be set up for the school safety-wise, regulations, following the DESI CDC guidelines. Why not just put the two full days in place? And, you know, I know there's no after-school program, but that will, I think, help a lot of working parents, because there are numerous parents that are not going to be there to get their kids off the bus. And they don't have that resource to get their kids off the bus. They don't have other resources. We're trying to practice that safe distance, that social distance with many people. So it's gonna be a difficult situation for those parents that are working full-time to get out of work, zoom up the highway from Boston, wherever they work, or ten minutes, to try to negotiate different schedules for us, for our kids to get off the bus safely by twelve or whatever the schedule's gonna be in the beginning, a little off, but it's gonna be difficult. I don't mind a hybrid plan, but two half-days, it's just not feasible for many parents. We can't just drop our careers and stay home and, you know, work half-days. So it's a huge concern, and I think a lot of parents are, you know, trying to voice that part, that piece, negotiate that piece and say, let's get our two full days as if before the pandemic. So that's what I wanted to say, express my concern. The other days are fine. You know, I know that, you know, we can work it out somehow, and the kids can have remote learning, and there's gonna be a lot of interaction. It's gonna be different than what it was in the past few months. These kids haven't had that almost six months of a routine, a structure. They regress so much. A lot of kids. We're trying to do the best, you know, keep them reading during the summertime, practicing their math. My step-overs, I do that with my kids, but they do need at least a two-full-day routine with teachers. And I only hope that that's what will change. For the sake and safety of our kids coming off the bus, I don't see a lot of parents dropping their careers and changing their hours. You know, we're right around the corner of September sixteenth.
Well, we share in your concerns for sure, Mrs. DeBolito, and we appreciate your call and your feedback.
Yeah, so when will we know? Because we have to vote on something, right? We have to, I mean, we have to agree on something.
While I keep reiterating, this isn't as simple as people just making a decision what they think is best for everyone. We continue to reiterate that we have to sit down with our employee groups. I could personally say, hey, I think it's safe, well, let's all go in, and boy, that's gonna make a lot of people in town happy. But man, if we don't have buy-in or we don't have acceptance from our employee groups, our unions, then the best-laid plan really, you know, is no plan at all. So I just can't reiterate that enough. You know, and, you know, I understand a lot of people don't understand that. I certainly understand that. But we all share in those same concerns, and we all want as much in-time instruction, the teachers included, believe it or not. They realize the value of in-time, quality instruction. So, you know, we're working as... Brian, do you have another call?
Hi, am I on?
One moment, Mr. Go ahead, caller.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. This is Jean Hogan. I'm at 60 Briarwood Road. Can you hear me?
Yep, good evening.
Okay, cool. Thank you. So I have a question that sort of piggybacks on what was just spoken about. As a parent, right, I don't, as a person, I don't like to sign my name on the dotted line until I have all of the information. And I understand there's a lot of balls in the air. I can appreciate that. But I feel like, you know, I'm being sort of forced into this binding agreement from, without all of the information. So is there a possibility of an extension for parents that are on the fence? I mean, it's not quite as simple for me as saying, do I want my kids in an in-school setting or not? There's a lot of factors involved in my decision. And I know we can't, we can't predict when, we can expect, you know, final...
Yep, fair question, Mr. Malone.
Well, one of the concerns I think we definitely have in regards to parent making, parents making their decisions is the appropriate staffing. At the same time as we're certainly trying to work with parents to allow them to make their choice, we are receiving more and more leave requests from staff that likely will not allow them to take part in the in-person learning portion. And at the same time, may provide us some teaching assets for the Remote Learning Academy. But at some point, I think we really need to realize that we're close to students returning on September sixteenth. Our staff and our administrators need to plan for the students that are gonna be in front of them and plan for the students that are going to be learning remotely. And if that, if that shifts around, or if we don't have answers to some of that, my concern is we'll actually have more unanswered questions, not less. I don't know if Ms. Regan has anything she wants to add to that.
I do. I do. I just really want to reiterate how difficult we realize this is, and it's really, it's that chicken, it's the egg. And what, how can I make this decision if I don't have all of this? And it really, one is contingent on another. I should reiterate, we need to, it doesn't take a day, it takes weeks to get the class cohorts and class assignments together. So I would suggest if you're on the fence and you're waiting for all those details, you choose the hybrid. Here's why. It's a lot easier to decide that I'm gonna go from hybrid to Remote Learning Academy. To go the other way, once we've created balanced hybrid cohorts, is gonna be more difficult. So if you're, if you're really on that fence and you're, and the details of the hybrid are what are holding you up, I would say, choose the hybrid. So I'm giving you that advice. A parent asked that of a principal today. Can I at any time choose Remote Learning Academy? Yes, you'd be put into that cohort. But what's really important is we, it takes some significant time to now balance out those classes, make sure that we have the same amount, the appropriate amount, and then when you consider the high school course scheduling, knowing if we have the available staff and I'll just pick a course, freshman English. Do we have, how many staff members do we have to teach freshman English? And then how do we balance out all those courses with equitable cohorts? So it is tedious. We do need the time to do that. We also wanna be able to prepare parents at least a week before their kiddos coming back, what cohort they're in, what their course schedule will look like. So there's multiple, you know, negotiations, if you will, going on at the same time, not only with our unions, but how do we balance the class lists, the cohorts, the courses? There's a lot of balls in the air. So I truly appreciate the difficulty. We are living in this constant limbo and trying to plan the best educational scenario for students. I can tell you, your survey input has been invaluable. We predicted to the department that we would have about seventeen percent of our district thinking they want Remote Learning Academy. We're at about fifteen percent, and that's with, you know, two-thirds of our parents already reporting what they want for their child. So your input all along has been consistent. We're really appreciative of that, and we get it. Without all those details, it's still not any easier than it was maybe then. So I don't know if I've helped you in any way make a decision. I wish I could offer you more detail right now, and if we had it, we would, we certainly would.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. I'm going to move down the agenda here a little. I know we had Mr. Cutlass give his elementary school building report. I'm just gonna check in with Mrs. Demos. I'm pretty sure nothing has changed with the pandemic, but with regards to the Tewksbury Education Foundation?
There is nothing to report with the Tewksbury Educational Foundation tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Happy to report the CPAC had a meeting, I think a week and a half or two weeks ago, which they took parent concerns, feedback and input regarding the plans. I think I saw an email in the last day or two where the leadership has reached out, and they're trying to get a meeting together with the district, which I'm sure hopefully will take place in the next week or two. So that's the update from the CPAC. Mr. Stadman is not here, and same thing. I don't believe they've had any wellness advisory committee meetings. That will get us to the policies. We don't have any policies. I'd like to move on to old business. Looks like Mr. Malone has already addressed the Step Two Comprehensive Reopening Plan. Thank you for taking that out of order, Mr. Malone, so people could hear that upfront. And next takes us to the 2020, 2021 school calendar year. So I'll yield the floor to Mrs. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Sammon. Well, as promised, we brought back the 2021 school calendar, and quite a bit of work went into looking at this. I have to thank Ms. Johnson and Ms. Cutlass for doing this work, because we counted these days probably twenty different times. So you can see, as looking at the calendar, the green blocks, the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh remain our Day One and Day Two, opening day, as I reported in my updates. The green numbers, August thirty-first through September fifteenth, are those ten days for training our staff and our students and families for the reopening piece. The first student day is the sixteenth of September. What we did was we blacked out now full days off, just to try to lessen the color coding. A whole block that's black is a day off. So we preserved Friday the fourth off and obviously the Labor Day. What we then proceeded to do was look at the A/B cohort. We can't predict right now how long we'll be in a hybrid model, so we needed to balance out how many in-person days each cohort had. And we did that. We were able to do that. And if we, once we come back to school, we will report which days are cohort days on a regular basis for families. You can see that we moved as many as we could our teacher workshop days, so those are early release days, to the remote day, the A/B remote day, to the Wednesday, so that we lessen the impact on in-person days. And because the ten days that we needed for the reopening training are, came out of our one-eighty, that left us with a hundred seventy educational days or instructional days we needed to maintain. But those ten days fit before the sixteenth, so our last day, June twenty-third, with the built-in five snow days, remains the same, so it did not lengthen the school year. So we're asking you to approve, oh, I'd like to actually draw your attention to the back of the calendar. We had to adjust, paying special attention to different religious holidays, the open house schedule. While it's not determined how open house will function, I would predict virtually, we needed to move those open house dates in a logical fashion for our grades, preschool all the way through high school. So the back of the calendar also reflects a change in open house dates.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan, and I'd just like to note for other people watching tonight, September sixteenth is the first scheduled day for students, so just wanna be clear about that, September sixteenth. And just a little bit of update with regards to those ten days. Mrs. Regan, correct me if I'm wrong, there may be some opportunities with staff and families to get together regarding some sort of training? Possibly.
And again, we're working out the details of those ten days with our teachers' union, but clearly we're on the same page that we want some time for the teachers to communicate and reach out to students and families prior to the start of school, the 2021 school year.
Great. I'll go to Mr. Cutlass. Any questions, comments about the calendar?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos.
No questions at this time.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Nothing at this time, Chairman.
Great. What is the pleasure of the board at this time with regards to the school calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the school calendar for year 2020, 2021, as amended here.
And I'll second that. I have a motion by Shannon with a second to approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We have accepted new school calendar. I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Regan for our 2020, 2021 register periods, please.
And the draft we have in front of us reflect the 2021 school calendar, school days, what we do. Can you handle? Okay, so this, this register period identifies our four marking terms in the year, progress report timing, report card timing, and a balance of equity amongst the four marking terms. So if you can put your blessing on this tonight, we can certainly start putting those dates into our school website calendar.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have any questions for Mrs. Regan?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve the registration.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second to approve the 2020, 2021 register periods. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. That's been approved. Moving on to the new business school committee, 2020... Oh, I'm sorry. We have non-union salary personnel adjustments for 2020, 2021. 2020, I'm sorry, we have non-union salary personnel adjustments for 2020-2021. My understanding is two people were accidentally omitted. Is that correct, Mr. Malone from the list from the last meeting?
I believe so. I think Mr. Libby has the details.
Okay, Mr. Libby?
Yeah, exactly, Mr. Chair. It was just an omission, bad cut and pasts, if you will, on the letter. These are two new positions that weren't in our, in the fold last year when we did this letter, and they were inadvertently omitted. No reflection on their work to this point. They've been wonderful in those roles. And we're just asking the committee to clean that up for us if they didn't mind.
Great, no problem. Thank you for the clarity. Any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would actually like to make the motion to approve the FY '20 and '21 salary increases.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Director of Family Student, family support position, and the Secretary to the Assistant Superintendent. Mr. Cutlass, I'll start with you.
I'll abstain, Mr. Chairman, as I'm related to one of them.
Yep, understand. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that and possible conflicts while you weren't voting. Thank you. Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Those are passed. School committee matters of interest. I'm going to go back to Brian, see if there's any last callers hanging on.
Brian? We do have a caller. Okay. Could you please put him through? Caller, go ahead. Just make sure your TV's down.
Hello?
Yep, you are all set. Go ahead.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Hi, it's Shelley Robel again, 54 Weydaw. When I called back, it's been a while. I just wanted to reiterate that my concern regarding my children at home was really not with the childcare issue. It was more, or more so with the synchronous learning concern. If my children aren't able to complete the work until I am home and able to assist them, then they are losing that instructional time with the teacher. And I think that that is perhaps what some of the parents are concerned about, but unable to articulate correctly, is that we can do the work whenever we get home. However, if the goal for the remote instruction is to increase teacher time with the students, allowing the children to do it at any given point during the day doesn't achieve that. So again, I just really wanted to put that out there because as a staff member, I can't wait to get back to school. I appreciate everything that you are all doing, and I am intimately aware of the amount of time that you have all spent working to get us all back to school. But there are some significantly valid concerns that many of us have as parents and teachers with, you know, making this experience positive for us, you know, at work and at home. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Robel. Brian?
Yep, we have one coming in.
Okay, go ahead.
One sec.
Hello?
Hi, my call was dropped earlier. I didn't finish what I wanted to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So we're talking about the teachers' union, and we're talking about leave of absence, medical leave of absence. When is, when is Tewksbury going to know where we're going to, where are we going to fall? If we need the required staff for the two full remote learn, two, excuse me, two full end date, when are we going to know?
Mr. Malone?
Is the question, when are we going to know about the?
Yes, when are we going to know about, when are the parents and guardians of this community going to know about the, how many staff are we going to have? If we don't have, it looks like, it seems like we don't have enough staff. So in that case, is Tewksbury interviewing? Are they looking for other teachers for possibly getting those two full days as opposed to those half days? So when are we going to know? That's what, you know, we'd like to know that.
Right. I think I understand the question. I think that the plan we're discussing in and as was put out is in regards to a four-hour day. If we were going to move to a six-hour day, which is certainly something, as Mr. Wilson said, is something we would like the work up to. But I don't think, I'm not sure if the committee is considering moving from a four-hour day to a six-hour day. In relation to the, we certainly want to hear the concerns and the ideas. In relation to staffing, certainly I've put out a deadline for staffing to notify of when their intent to leave. However, there is nothing legally binding that prevents a staff member from putting in a leave whenever they see fit. And it's up to the district to respond to the needs of that individual if they're putting in for a leave, particularly if it's directly related to COVID. So staffing is going to be an absolute ongoing issue, no matter if we're talking about remote learning, all-in, hybrid for four days, or four hours a day, or six hours a day. So staffing is something we're going to have to regularly monitor. And certainly if we get into situations where staff members need to quarantine and do other things, those are things we're going to have to respond to. We're actively looking for substitutes at this time, and we will continue to do so. But it's going to be a complex issue to respond to. We understand, you know, I think the purpose of one of these meetings is to hear from parents. But the plan, as stated, right now is a four-hour-a-day, two days a week in person, with the remainder portion of the day remotely, in addition to three additional days remotely.
Okay, so the committee is not looking at all to change the four to six-hour day?
We're not doing that at this time. I believe I said that. I thought I made that very clear.
Okay.
I think the first caller that called in and asked, are you going to vote tonight to change the day? And I'm going to continue to go back to this. Why people aren't understanding all this thing, I don't know. All of this, we still have to get by and from the.
I'm sorry. I missed that part because I work in a hellfield. I have a very demanding job, and I come home late. So that's, you know, if somebody already said that, I don't mean for you to be redundant, but I just wanted to make it clear. Because it's a major concern for these kids to get off the bus at that time, and no one is there for them. No one.
I don't disagree with you at all.
At those resources.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you at all. I really don't.
How about the school buses trying to, if they're going to spend more on, you know, charging more, the town more, how about them trying to accommodate the bus stops a little closer to the addresses of the students? Maybe that'll help.
Certainly, certainly everything's an option.
So they can walk safely in the snowstorm or what have you, and get them into their homes safely, so they can come home, wash up, have a little lunch as quickly as possible, and get them on their remote mode.
Everything is an option, for sure.
Education, right? Yeah, no, I'm just saying, like, I missed that part. So I just wanted to know, because that's the biggest concern for me and many parents. So that's not even going to be on the negotiation table at all. So that, that, okay, all right.
Thank you very much. Thanks for calling back.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
No problem. Have a good night.
Everyone. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you. You too. Brian?
Yep, just give me one second to bring him in.
Hi, am I on?
Yep.
This is Deanna on Meadow Patsy Way. I have two children in the Tewksbury Public School System.
Yes.
I just want to say that I appreciate everything you guys are trying to do and put together. I do support the teachers, as well as the working parents that are not working from home. I actually have a couple of questions. I started calling in back when someone stated that the votes are not made in a vacuum. As a parent, I was not advised of the half-day hybrid. I was advised of the full-day, two-day hybrid, or the one week on, one week off. So my question, first question, is, was the half-day hybrid put in place to see if more families would go remote?
Mr. Malone?
Hello?
Mr. Malone?
No, I think the question was, was the half, was the four-hour-day hybrid put in place so more parents would go remote? Is that the question?
To try to persuade families not being able to.
I can't hear it, Brenda.
To push the remote option.
Yes, Superintendent, the question was, was the half-day, four-hour put in, so more people would be inclined to? But one follow-up, was that four-hour, half-day part of the initial plan and survey that was sent out?
Yes, it was. There was a link, as I explained. There were two links that went out, one that showed, you know, and honestly, the surveys, we're on survey number five with our parents. So I get it. You're tired of seeing our emails come with new and often information, and sometimes things are missed. But I can guarantee that what went in there was two samples of the weekly schedule cohorting, two samples of a hybrid schedule for the day. So it was, you know, in the day of, four-hour, six-hour. They were both included in, in that, in one of our prior surveys. I would say this, I'm sorry I didn't get your name, I think Deara? I'm very sorry, I don't have your name. We're not proposing remote learning for our district at this point. We had to plan for it, but we went in prioritizing all-in. And then, as I said, throughout a long process of working with a task force, our leadership team, our teachers that were voluntary, talk with our principals, parents, students, multiple surveys, this process got us to where we are today as a start. Our goal, and just like we've heard from many parents, is to get our students back in school to begin with. It's been over five months since they've been in school. We want them back in school, and then move towards the safest way to do that, and then the safest way to get them back in school longer, and then back in school altogether. I haven't spent much time talking about this today, but I'm really excited to tell you. And if you watched the workshop, our special ed students that needed extended year service attended in person, school time this past summer, and it went very well. And when all the rules were followed, and some of our most, students with the most challenging needs were able to keep their mask on and learn how to go on a field trip, you know, people were really excited to be back. And those were our, some of our teachers and aides who worked with our special ed students in person. So I think, I know it's a microcosm of what we're trying to do, reopen a school system, but we want to do that successfully and then provide lengthier in-person time for every single student. So emphatically no, the hybrid is in between of where we want to be.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Brian, do you have anyone else?
We do. Caller, whenever you're ready. Go ahead.
Yes, hi, this is Anne Seichter. I live at 13 South Elizabeth Street.
Hi, Mrs. Seichter.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you.
I had a quick question for those who are contemplating the hybrid model, like I am. I'm also still very concerned about, you know, COVID-19, obviously. So I was just wondering, and I may have missed it in some of your emails, but I was wondering if you were also going to try to advise families about the state mandates about gatherings and travel to decrease the risk of transmitting COVID-19 within our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Seichter. Certainly, we've already been dealing that with our staff at this time. And certainly, as we get closer to the start date, that's typically a 14-day quarantine or isolation. And certainly, we'll message out to parents. I will tell you that travel advisory has changed three times in three weeks. So we're a little bit reluctant to put it out a little bit too soon. But we will monitor that, and certainly, yes, we will absolutely make families aware of that.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Seichter. Brian, anyone else?
Let me see. I would just give it another minute or so, because we did have a couple people trying to call in.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, while we're waiting, the new school committee assignments are out. I do need to apologize to Mrs. Demos. I don't know why I thought I gave all the information to Gail, but with regards to the Education Foundation, Mrs. Demos, Mr. Stadman is going to be there. I saw that, I think I had you on too many committees. So in order to have parity across the board, that was oversight on my bad. So I will get the amended information to Gail. That's that. School committee matters of interest. I'm going to start with Mr. Cutlass.
All set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Demos?
No, I just wanted to take a minute to thank the residents who have reached out via email and phone. I have been reading through and taking all of their concerns to heart. I am struggling to keep up with the responses on the emails, so they're coming, but the amount that I'm, we're all getting daily is hard to keep up with. So just wanted it out there that I am reading through them. I am acknowledging them. I'm keeping them in my thoughts as we're making decisions, but I'm working at the responses. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'm going to echo what Mrs. Demos just said. I'm reading through all the emails and trying to get caught up, keep up with responding. If I don't respond, I apologize, but I'm trying to get to all of them. I would say, and Keith, you mentioned this earlier tonight, but, you know, it's, I think it's always a good lesson to, when you're going to correspond with anyone, that you do it professionally and in a polite manner. And some of the tone of some of the emails, and some of the language, and some of the things used, I really personally didn't appreciate. I understand that I'm a public servant and that I'm here to serve the community, but I think it should be done with respect. I take my time to make sure I treat all the residents with respect, and I just ask for that same professionalism back. I'm going to just make one quick comment. My wife always gives me lots of tips of different things to think about. I always say she's the brains of the family. But whether this, and regardless of what you're working, what model you choose to send your child into, I think it's important to know that how you send them off, and what you say to them about the experience they're about to have is critical in whether it's successful or not. So I just encourage everyone to just take a minute, pause, and remember that we're in a pandemic, and we're doing our best to get through a difficult time. And we're doing our best to navigate some really difficult waters, make sure that we make the best decision for our students, because that's the most important thing to us, is that our students have a good experience, and that they're learning, and that they're successful when they leave Tewksbury. So I just think it's important that we keep that in the back of our minds, and we tap the brakes, and we just, we think about the messages that we're sending. This is, this hybrid model will be a great starting point. And certainly, our hope is to get the kids all back in school, but we're not going to do that if we can't do it safely. So thank you for all the correspondence. Thank you for reaching out. And if I haven't answered something to your satisfaction, just give me a call. I'll be happy to talk to you about it. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All said, Mr. Wilson, I couldn't have. Well said, Mr. Wilson. I couldn't agree with you more. One final, no, two things I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our town manager. I know sometimes people see that independent with the schools. Certainly, I don't. I think anyone that's worked on any board in town will tell you that. And it's, he's been 100% behind, you know, getting schools and he's gonna continue to do so back up and running. Obviously, the support that we've received from the select, selectmen as well has been great. And I I just, I I want to reiterate that, no, I'm, we're not trying to rush into anything to make, you know, the decision first. We want to make good decisions based on what science and the numbers tell us, what facts and metrics, as opposed to, you know, people's fears or opinions and anxieties or some arbitrary date that we're gonna set to say, well, maybe we should transition here or transition there. Certainly with this time of uncertainty, you know, we, the most important thing, and I can't reiterate enough, I think people have grown accustomed to a certain level of quality of education here in Tewksbury that we want to continue to be able to provide, you know, like the governor from the jump. It's gonna be too slow for some, it's gonna be too fast for others. And I just ask that we remain mindful, that we respect each other and our neighbors. You know, I don't know necessarily, you know, if I'm walking in someone else's shoes, nor does someone know walking through mine. So I just want to assure the general public that we are doing our best to try to navigate this to what we think is going to be best for all of our students, our staff and our families. So with that, I'm going to give the future school committee and future subcommittee meeting dates. Our next meeting will be September 16th, first day of school for children. And then October 14th. I'm gonna check back in with Brian one more time, see if we have any callers.
Yep, we do have a caller. Caller, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Hi, this is Amy Duffy calling from 6 South Thomas Street. I want to start off by saying thank you so much for all the hard work you're doing. I'm a 20-year veteran, second-grade teacher in another district, so I'm feeling, you know, everything everybody is going through right now, both as a teacher and as a parent. And I just want to applaud the teachers at the Keith Brook and Trahan, I'm sure it went to all the other schools as well, for all the hard work that they did. During the springtime, it was an impossible situation for many of us. And I was so blessed to have such great teachers for my children. My question now is, I'm going to have a rising first grader at Keith Brook and a rising fourth grader at Trahan. Are there going to be staggered pickup and drop-off times so that when caregivers are picking children up, there won't be one who gets picked up later than the other?
Great question. Mr. Malone?
So I think the question is regarding, will there be staggered pickup times? I don't think there'll be staggered pickup times as much as there will be an understanding that this is difficult for parents and, you know, we're, we'll have to be flexible on our end as to when, you know, students are arriving, if there's a complicated transportation plan or caregiver plan. And the same thing returning, what I would ask is if parents have particular situations, to please contact your principal, make them aware of it. Problem solved with the building principal, look at all aspects. Certainly, we'll be understanding of the challenges that any hybrid you know, type model will have on parents. So I would just ask that people contact their individual principal, explain the situation, talk through possible solutions so we're all in the loop together.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thanks, Mrs. Duffy. Anyone else, Brian?
Not at this moment.
All right, Mr. Cutlass?
Oh, I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, I was thinking maybe it was time you'd like to make.
Yes, I will make a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's regular school committee meeting. Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Thank you to the public for all your thoughtful comments and concerns and insight. And we'll see everyone on September 16th. Thank you. Good evening.
Take care.